Everyone for joining promptly. And Mr. Gray has transitioned us over to Zoom, so thank you all for your patience. Hopefully, fingers crossed, we don't have that WebEx situation where we crashed last month. So we'll see how it goes, but just ask for everyone to be patient. As we start, want to ask the council if there is a vote to approve today's work session agenda. Councilmember Blunt.
I would like to move into a closed.
Close session for personnel matters, please. Did you hear me?
Yes, so Councilmember Blunt, you wanted to do that at the end of the work session before the council meeting starts?
I would prefer to do it before the council meeting. It just won't be long.
If I'd ask respectfully, could we do it at the end and we can just move quickly through this so we have time? That way, the residents, since they've already joined and they're watching on the live stream, we get the business out of the way. Let them go so they have a break in between the council meeting and the work session. Would that be okay?
No, I really would like for the closed, closed, for a closed session.
Second.
Okay, and sounds like there's a second. So to our residents, thank you for joining via Zoom and Facebook Live at this time. It appears we need to go into closed session for a personnel matter. So is there a motion to move into closed session?
I still move.
Moved by council member, I'm sorry, I saw Ms. Blunt's lips going, I was writing it down. And is there a second? I have a motion by Councilmember Blunt.
Second.
Second by Councilmember Lundie, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
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 Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much. So, Mr. Gray, I know you have the live feed going. Can, is there a way that you can exit us out of the live feed? And then also from the meeting, I'm not as familiar with Zoom, but we do have residents on. So if, if possible, for those outside of, I would say, Mr. Tenelli and our counsel, our legal counsel, if you could just remove the other folks. And if possible, if you could just put a note, I don't know if you can, on the feed on Facebook to let the audience know that we are going into a closed session and will restart the public open meeting once we conclude. Is that possible?
That is possible. I can also try to put you guys in the breakout room.
Oh, that's perfect.
Okay, because my only concern is we advertise this meeting to start at 5:30. So if people don't see us on, I don't want them to not come back. So as long as we can communicate out. And let me just double check, Ms. Ferguson, because I know you've dealt with several municipalities. If we go into a closed session via the breakout room, is that legally compliant? Or do we need to just shut down or enclose everyone out that is not part of the council member and the acting town administrator?
I think it matters just so long as you close appropriately for an appropriate reason. However, you do that electronically is fine.
Okay, thank you. And I do want to take a step back. Sorry, there was a lot of commotion. Councilmember Blunt, I just want to make sure we're also compliant. I'm trying to find the actual language because I should have cited that in closing. So give me just one second, please, because I do want to read that while we still have residents connected. One moment, please.
We can, we can have everybody, all those that are not part of the council to sign out. And you can come back in afterwards. Because I'm not sure which ones are actually with the council, the ones that have numbers? Or I can just put everybody back in the waiting room?
So did everyone understand that Mr. Gray was suggesting that you disconnect from the meeting?
I'll just hang up, Mayor, just got interested in signing out.
Okay, and again, I was asked to move into closed session under general provisions in Article 3-305 to discuss a personnel man, matter. And this is under item number one. So just want to make sure that is stated. So again, for the residents who connected, apologies, but we had a request to move into closed session and will rejoin you all in the, so we'll get a note out to let you know that you can come back into the meeting as quickly as possible. All right, thank you for the residents and your patience while we had to go into closed session. We are now back in open session to continue on with today's agenda. At this time, I would ask for a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Not sure if everyone had a chance to look over it yet. Moved by Councilmember Rout, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Councilmember Mendoza, any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote, all in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye.
Aye.
Any nays? The ayes have it, thank you so much. At this time, we'll go on to the approval of the January 11th work session minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Mendoza, is there a second? Is there a second on the work session minutes? Hearing none, the motion dies to approve the work session minutes. So we'll move on to the next item under new business. And it's over to you, Mr. Tenelli, for the COLA and merit increases.
Yes, I do, Mayor and council. We touched on this briefly at the last meeting and a full presentation was requested. I sent one out and I could go ahead and, Rick, I might be able to share the screen here, if that's okay?
Yes.
Okay. Give me one second. I got a lot of things up here, hold on one second, I'm sorry. Do I see it? FY21 merit proposal, just see that screen, is that correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Well, paranoia is going to set down some of our screens behind it, okay. When we passed the budget back in June, what was included in the budget was a COLA of 2.3% and a merit increase of 1.5%. But we're in the middle of the pandemic, still in the heat of it and not knowing the financial impact. We passed a budget with this, but I requested Mayor and council that we pass it, but we're not going to institute the COLA and merit increases yet until we see how we are doing financially. We're through February, we're 58% of the way through the fiscal year and our expenses are well under budget. Revenues are a little bit ahead. And one of the reasons why, especially in the compensation category where this impacts, we've had large savings and if we keep going, it'll be around $380,000 by the end of the fiscal year, just in compensation. And that is because we've had the town administrator position vacant for the year and have that budget to be filled next month. And that still is part of that savings. The town clerk position has been vacant since the end of September. We had a workers' compensation was, came in about 20,000 less than projected. Health insurance renewal was less than anticipated. We have a deputy chief position, which is still vacant. So all of this is combined, so the way we're running right now will be about $380,000 under budget just because of compensation, mostly because of higher level positions have been, have not been filled throughout the year. And I attached to Bureau of Labor Statistics where you can see highlighted here. It's probably a little difficult to see, but this came out last week. And luckily, wages for calendar year 2020 have increased 3.9% over a 12-month period. So that 2.3 and that 1.5 is 3.8% total. So that's within line of Bureau, it's a little bit less than the BLS, but I just want to keep things consistent because that was, that, that's what was in the original budget when it was passed. There are placeholders in there, but we're not actually given. So just going over to here, through January, our total compensation, again, so far, it's had no COLA or merit. You know, the COLA, just back up a minute, COLA goes to all employees, merit is merit, merit you have to earn. And we're at 58% through the year and we've only expended 51% of the compensation budget. And if we keep going on the same path without an increase, there's going to be a 9% savings total or 91% of the budget expended through the end of fiscal year if no COLA or merit are given. So we'll have a $380,000 savings. So this is why I want to come back and revisit the COLA and merit. Because we are into February now and there's just a graph to show where we are by department compared to budget and projected year-end to budget. You know, the biggest difference is going to be in your, in the public safety department because it has the most employees and also in the town administrator and clerk departments where we have the vacancies of the key positions. So what would it look like? Okay, this is just one scenario, this, I call this the baseline scenario, this scenario. If we do, if we retro this back to July 1, just, just a scenario, what would it cost us? If we started back when the budget was passed, at the start of fiscal year? A 2.3% COLA would equate to almost $70,000. You see, there's no COLA here for the mayor and council or for the administrator because Mayor and council, that is fixed. And this, and the administrative position is still vacant, so they wouldn't get a COLA for somebody that's not here, obviously. The same goes for merit. And you can see the impact on each department as we go from the COLA to merit, what it would cost. So COLA would, again, assuming it starts July 1, retro back, would it be additional $70,000? And merit of 1.5% would be $45,000 for a total of $115,000. And I can cut this any way you want, you know, you can start this, you know, the mayor and council approve it. You can start it retro back to July 1, you can pick it up in October 1, it costs 25% less because you got a quarter of the fiscal year going. You can start it on January 1, you can start it on April 1, you can do just COLA or merit or just merit, no COLA. You can cut it any way you want, pretty much, but I just want to put the options out there just so you see what it looks like. But the biggest takeaway here is we do have, we are under budget with compensation because of the vacancy in the positions for one thing or another. And we've also had some vacancies throughout with public safety that employees leave and then we hire again. So you have that attrition process. So that's where it is right now. If anybody has any questions about this, I just want to make a presentation, you know, so, so a good starting, starting point here.
Great, thank you, Mr. Tenelli, and also for laying out the scenarios just from the beginning of the fiscal year and then on a quarterly basis throughout. And I appreciate Councilmember Rout bringing this up at the council meeting last month to say, let's look at what the numbers actually show before we're asked to take a vote on this. So Councilmember Rout or Lundie or Blunt or Mendoza, any questions for Mr. Tenelli or clarifications that you all might need?
No, it's good.
Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Tenelli, for laying that out for us. And then want to, again, just stepping back to the January meeting. I recall there was interest from a few of our team members about the Black History Month program and some ideas were shared. Just wanted to give you all opportunity to report out and let us know if you've had a chance to connect and have anything in the works. So I'll turn it over to Councilmembers Lundie, Mendoza, and Blunt.
Um, I know when we last talked, I know Vito said that Diane and Diamond was going to take the lead. And I was going to put and do like a little piece in about 10, a first six minutes, but he said 10 minutes. That's all I have on the black history. But now, since it's so late in the game, there's no way that I can put my fashions in the black history because I don't think it's even got started unless someone worked on it on their own. But I know that the lead was supposed to have been taken by Diamond and Diane, per Vito.
Okay, thank you, Councilmember Blunt. So, Mr. Tenelli, I don't know that Ms. Diane is on, but have you gotten any information from staff in terms of any plans or specifics?
Nothing, since we talked the last meeting and it sounded like, since then, at the last meeting too, there's some, it sounded like more pressing things were brought up as well. So, no, I haven't heard from anybody.
Okay, Ms. Diane, I think I hear you, yes.
Yes, ma'am. I, that's the first time I'm hearing of it, about Black History Month for Diamond and myself. I thought that, I read that it was going to be some keynote speakers and Vice President Kamala Harris was going to be on Zoom, featured on Zoom for Black History Month.
Thank you, Ms. Griffin, that was, there's another event, I remember seeing the same thing, but that's outside of the town of Bladensburg, I forget the organization.
I thought it was for the town and I thought that was wonderful for the town. But no, I did not have a clue about me participating in getting into the Black History Month. I did speak with Vito about the Black History Month before the month began or the first of the month because I know we generally do that, but we haven't had any planning.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Griffin. I saw Councilmember Rout's hand up.
Thank you, Mayor James. At our, we had a special closed session and, no, I'm sorry, we had a special council meeting. Still a little affected by the closed session. We had a special council meeting by which the acting town administrator, Tenelli, had said that he had, he was talking to someone and there was a person in his town that did beautiful extravagant, like a portrayal. And this was a person that would tell the story.
Right.
And that that person would then, he would talk and see if that person could come to do a presentation. And then at that time, it was talked about, it's, that I recall, that Councilmember Blunt just wanted a little break for some, for her fashion.
I'm just getting tired.
I think that if acting town administrator, Tenelli, can hook us up with the person over the, like, across the bay, he said, for that person to, you know, do a, something about, talking about black history and she does that, that would be fine. But at this late in the game, I'm not sure if we could even get speakers such as the Obamas or Kamala Harris. I mean, they're, they are booked. And so I'm not sure if we can get something like that quickly. Maybe that's something we could work on together as a black history committee that we can be able to come together and project. Maybe next year, we could think about having the Obamas or something, or something to the tune of that. So I recommend that we go with the, the individual that Mr. Tenelli has suggested. I yield back.
So, Mr. Tenelli, if you don't mind, maybe connecting Diane with the historian that you mentioned to us and she can explore any available dates and just share with the council. I think if, if she's booked up, then we have our answer, if she's not available because we're in February. However, if she comes back and she does have some availability, perhaps, once Ms. Diane shares that with the council and staff, we can, you know, figure out a date. The nice thing is it's virtual, so it doesn't have to be planned out like our event last year, which we worked on for several months, so I still think it'll be okay. I see one more hand up, Councilmember Blunt.
I was, Johnny, I resent that something, something I think to everyone. And she was saying, like, it don't have to be the Kamlas, even though we like that. We have, I heard leaders right within ourselves and in the communities. And we might can reach out to somebody who did something great in the community. It don't have to be a professional or something like that. So maybe because of the short of time, then maybe you could, we, if you all know someone who has made a difference in the community, somebody who stepped out, I mean, that would be great as well.
That's a great idea, thank you for that suggestion, Councilmember Blunt. So it looks like we have a few opportunities to explore. And if you all can think of a local history maker, I would again just say, let's, if it's okay with Mr. Tenelli, give that information to Ms. Diane so she can follow up and get the availability of the person and some available dates. The next item is over to Councilmember Rout for a project with the Bladensburg Fire Department, volunteer fire department.
Yes, thank you, Mayor James. I was contacted, hold on, pulling up the correspondence now. At our last meeting, we, Chief Sumner has spoke to us about hoarding and the mental health associated diagnoses as it relates to individuals that may have a clinical disorder that may get in the way of safety. And so he was sharing at that meeting that there, there are members of the volunteer fire department that participate in educational and safety awareness. I was able to speak with Ms. Monica Brozowski of the volunteer fire department and we wanted to know basically if the mayor and town council can support an opportunity to get word out as it relates to the hoarding and space heaters behavior. And so what, what the volunteer fire department would do is write the literature and the correspondence that we could, you know, maybe send out to every Bladensburg resident and business on a postcard and be able to share positive, you know, share information that's factual about hoarding and space heaters and the use of space heaters. And that correspondence is sent out, maybe using our marketing specialist, who I know would do a fine job with designing such a postcard on both sides. And the volunteer fire department will give the actual written facts that they have. Additionally, we thought to top it off, we could host some type of virtual panel discussion to educate the community, not only with that. And I, I was also wanting to see if we could get, make it be bilingual. So we can, as we speak, we can have an interpreter who interprets what we say in English and to Spanish. So that information is given out because hoarding is very serious. And, and speaking with Ms. Monica Brozowski of the volunteer fire department, that they have had some situations with space heaters recently that creates unsafe positions. And so they just wanted to educate our town and I thought it was an excellent opportunity. And so I'm sure that if this is a, if this is of interest of the town council for, so my request is that the acting town administrator allow us to use town resources to include the marketing specialist in postage. I yield back.
Thank you, thank you so much, Councilmember Rout. That's a great idea after the information that we received from Chief Sumner. So definitely appreciate you taking the lead on that. And I saw heads shaking in the affirmative as you were talking that, yes, we do need to support something like this and hopefully save some lives of our residents by getting the information out there. So it sounds like, it looks like a consensus here. Councilmember Blunt, looks like you have a comment?
Yes, and I'm sure the fire department already know that they cannot use the word hoarding, but I just thought, you might know that already, they cannot use that word, hoarding. But I'm sure they know that as well. So make sure when they do that language, they don't use the word hoarding because that's a mental disorder.
That's a great point, thank you for bringing that up, Councilmember Blunt. That's hugely important. And we'd hate to print materials and then have to reprint them because, you know, we made that mistake. So I appreciate that feedback. The next item on the agenda is the emergency budget amendment for the residential grant program. I'm sorry, the residential emergency grant program. Mr. Tenelli?
Um, we have emergency, we have two emergency budget ordinances. I'll take them one by one. Ms. Diane is going to read these into record during the council meeting. But the first one is a budget amendment ordinance 2-21. And this is to move $20,000 from, or reduce the mayor and council budget for community events by $20,000 and to put this over into the mayor and council budget for the community grants for the emergency residential grant program. So that's the first budget amendment. And the overall budget impact is zero because we're just transferring one account to the other. And the proposed emergency budget ordinance, number 3-2021. And these are emergency budget ordinances because they're introduced and passed at the same meeting versus another budget ordinance where it's introduced at the first meeting and then read a second time and passed at the following meeting. So emergency, just for the public, the emergency budget ordinance gets done in one meeting. And these are posted outside. When the first notice went out, I apologize, had the wrong fiscal year on it. I since corrected it and sent it out to the mayor and council and reposted outside. The original one said 2019 through 2020, it's actually July 2020 through June 30, 2021. So just so everybody, you know, knows that. But the budget ordinance 3-2021 was to, was for the ambulance chassis for the liquid spring option. There's actually another modification where the batteries were moved on the ambulance chassis to the slide-out tray. And the, what we talked about at the last meeting was there's going to be a $10,500 increase for the liquid spring option because the other changes, it's only $9,000 option. So it's a positive on our end. So this budget ordinance reduces the, the mayor and council budget for the fire department donation by $9,000 and increases the grant expense, the grant expense budget for the ambulance chassis by $9,000. So overall, budget impact is zero, but the, but this is just reflective of that liquid spring option in that of the other change I came with moving the batteries on the chassis. And Ms. Diane will read these, you know, is it, is it any questions or comments? I guess now's the time to talk about it.
Yes, so I'll open up the floor and thank you, Mr. Tenelli, for correcting the fiscal year dates. I didn't want to let that get biased. But again, the, the reason that these are emergency ordinances is this funding related to the COVID, the CARES Fund grant that we were hoping to be able to help purchase the ambulance for our volunteer fire department. But then this additional expense we were made aware of after that grant had closed. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Tenelli, am I stating that right? Because I just want to make sure our residents understand.
Yeah.
And because we did commit to helping them get the ambulance, we, as a council, discussed, how can we do it with the least amount of budget impact? And so on an annual basis, we donate $30,000 to the fire department. And so, again, just recognizing that we are in COVID and want to be fiscally responsible, the suggestion was made to just take this additional cost for that ambulance from their annual donation. And so that's the reason why there's a zero impact to the budget. And then the nature of the residential emergency grant program, this is urgent because we've just, due to low staffing, had challenges with trying to get this program moving. And this is directly benefiting our residents who are impacted by natural disasters. So most recently, we had the flash flood situation that has occurred on September 10. And there may be others that, we don't want you to think this is the only reason, but the reality is our residents are in desperate need of some help because of the unexpected out-of-pocket expenses. because of the unexpected out-of-pocket expenses that they incurred from that natural disaster. Uh, but again, I want to open it up to my colleagues in case there's any questions for Mr. Tanelli. Councilmember Rout?
Thank you, Mayor James. So I am in support of the emergency budget ordinance. Um, both of them, as, um, I believe that I was the maker of those both motions, um, for the ambulance chassis, for the volunteer fire department, and for the community grants. Um, um, actually, it was proposed for the community grant to only be ten thousand dollars. Um, and I was, uh, suggesting that it should be raised to twenty thousand dollars because of, um, the need of two, uh, major critical incidents there, where, uh, sixteen families were displaced. And that, um, just doing my math, if there are sixteen families, there may be sixteen families that need a thousand dollar grants, um, from their town, by which they, uh, paid into using their taxes. Um, and so I am definitely in support. I'm very happy that we are, um, in February and we are getting the ball rolling, because I've been contacted by three of the affected residents who thought that the grant application was out, um, and turned in the application to, uh, using all of the rules. Um, and so they just wanted to know, is assistance coming? Um, and so, um, I, I'm in support of it. I definitely think that we should support it tonight so that, um, the support can get to the residents that need it as we designed it. I yield back.
Absolutely. Great points. Thank you, Councilmember Rout. And so with that, uh, seeing no other hands raised, we'll move on to the next item on the agenda. So this is, uh, Councilmember Lundie on the welcome packets for new residents.
Thank you, Mayor James. So I am, I am happy to see that this, uh, is on the agenda. And I know that our residents who are watching and who will watch and are happy to see that this is on the agenda for us. So, um, I learned that for a long time, residents have been requesting, um, to have some sort of welcome pack, some, um, I guess, uniformity type of welcome pack, something official. Um, so, and I agree that we should have something official with that. So I did reach out to, um, through Vito, to Ms. Diane, um, because the mayor suggested that I do that in one of our council meetings. So I did do that. I did reach out to Ms. Diane, and she was very helpful in, in, um, giving me some, um, suggestions about what she usually puts in, a packet to give to, um, residents. And so, uh, but moving forward, and she did reach out to me today to say that, um, we do have some, we do have some items, kind of residents want to talk about having some kind of tote bag or something. So we, as I understand from Ms. Diane, that we will be getting some tote bags. I think she said like approximately two hundred of these tote bags. And some other goodies will be in the bags for our, um, for our residents as well. So, uh, that is in the works. Um, so basically, we do need to put something together that's kind of comprehensive for the residents, something like a booklet, you know, something like a booklet. And we did have, um, one of our residents from, um, Ward One, uh, Mr. Wise. I don't know, I think he's on the call. So thank you so much, Mr. Wise. He's willing to be a part of a, a work group, if you will, or some kind of committee or what, or have you, to help to, you know, put together something, um, to, his feedback, because he's, he's been here. He's one of our longtime residents, and we definitely want to look at, um, uh, what he has to say about, um, this situation. Also, I would be interested in doing like a survey to gauge from our community some of the things that they may be interested in having to be a part of this, um, this booklet. So I definitely would want the full support of the staff and also staff and staff, you know, the personnel resources as well as monetary resources. So I would move that we would, um, make this a, um, a project that I would hope the Bladensburg Town Council would take on officially. Um, and after we get out of this budget cycle, then we could work on that, because I know that our TA would be very busy with doing the, um, um, the budget and everything. But I think we still could move forward with using our Zoom platform that we now have. I'm so excited about that, to have an interest meeting and to work with our staff to, our staff, like, work with me with the marketing specialist to send out something, so we can gauge people's interest in what they would like to see in a, um, a book, a town of, town of Bladensburg, um, booklet. So I'm excited about that. So, um, I guess I can get with the town administrator soon. And, but you already told me, Vito, that I can already reach out to Diamond to work with me on doing something with the Zoom and putting together some kind of marketing piece or whatever, flyer or something to gauge residents.
Sure, if you have ideas, yeah, yeah.
Yeah, that we can do a new, uh, e-blast or something, inviting residents, and we can share it on different social media platforms. So, um, I could be working on that sometime next week to get with Diamond on that.
Thank you, Councilmember Lundie. Great update. And I see a hand from Councilmember Rout.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mayor James. Um, uh, Councilmember Lundie, I, I do think that that is a great idea to survey the residents as well, um, to, because they may want to see different things in this packet that we have not traditionally used. So maybe possibly the, um, marketing specialist can design something to be sent out in the e-blast to survey the residents, um, that we are connected with. I know we're growing our engagement and we have an opportunity to reach, but, well, we do have residents that look forward to reading our e-blast on a weekly basis. And so, you know, we can just have some samples of things that we want to feature. So when is trash day? We can put in there. Um, what do they do with bulk items, bulk pickup? Um, we can list some suggestions that we want to see in there, um, and be able to send out a survey. That's an excellent, excellent idea. Um, I yield back.
Yeah, and, and just a follow-up. I do have, I've already started to look at some models. So once I get with that, and we put something out, and when people come to the table, I'll, I'll welcome you all to come to the table if you can. We can have that interest meeting, and I can share those things. Yep.
Great. Thank you, Councilmember Lundie, and thank you all for the great ideas.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, Councilmember Lundie.
So how do we, um, make this, do we have to, um, put a motion or vote on it at the council meeting about this being a project for the council? I mean, you know?
Yeah, great question. No, we just gave the directive to Mr. Tanelli collectively. I saw consensus just as you all were talking. It seems like we're all on board. This is a situation that requires a vote from the council. But thank you for asking that question. Um, and then the next item.
Yes, uh, Mr. Tanelli? The groundwork's already there, which is nice. Um, Don, Diamond already did the residence guide. Has the updated, of course. Um, you know, new administration and, um, freshen it up. Uh, good thing is a lot of it's there and, and Diane's pulling some marketing material giveaways, you know, and, and bags to, um, put in there. So it, it's a really cool initiative. So it's gonna be nice, you know, so it's.
Thank you, Vito. Thank you for that. And so.
Mayor James, I'm sorry.
Um, uh, Councilmember Lundie, yes?
Yes. So, um, yeah, so thank you so much. I did see, um, the, the resident guide, and we do need to update that. But still going forward, we understand we're still gonna have an interest meeting to meet with the residents who are interested.
Correct. Yes, correct. Thank you so much. So in the interest of time, I'm gonna be brief with the, um, the remaining updates, because I did learn from our attorney, when we publicize our council meeting starting at seven, and it's in the charter as well as our council rules, we need to honor that as much as possible. So, um, with the paycheck, uh, protection program, just want to remind our small business owners out there that the application process is open right now, and the deadline is March thirty-first. So please get your applications in. Um, we will be having a meeting in partnership with the, um, Prince George's Chamber of Commerce and Senator Cardin's office. The, um, Ms. Tisa Clark, who's the president of the board, will be our presenter. And she actually helps businesses complete the loan applications and guide, um, offers consulting and guidance on that. So she'll be the featured speaker to do a presentation, and then after that, uh, answer the questions of our business owners so that they can, uh, take advantage of that program. Uh, next up, Mr. Tanelli, you had the budget schedule. Is it, um, possible to do that quickly, because we're at six fifty-two?
All right, I will do it real quick. Um, I'll just share the screen really quick. Um, I'll be just like a minute and a half. Um, and in a few days, we're gonna get the constant yield notice from State Department of Assessments and Taxation, which tells us the, uh, projected income we're going to get based on our tax rate for residential real estate taxes, which is going to drive two-thirds of our budget. Um, at the March meeting, um, I went to, to give a presentation about that. I give every year. And also hear from the mayor and council FY twenty-two budget priorities. Um, at the April meeting, I want to review the FY twenty-one yeardate financials. We have three quarters of, of the year done then. So we know where we are, how we're gonna end up. Any sort of trends, projections, updates from the state, uh, revenue projections I can share with the mayor and council. Um, and then the draft budget is gonna be introduced at the April meeting based on the FY twenty-two budget priorities. We're just putting figures on the paper to talk about. And then we, we go into the budget work sessions. I have one, because the meeting is on the second Monday of April, April twelfth. I scheduled a budget work session. Again, this is all tentative. I'm just throwing this out there, and this is gonna be su- subject to change. But I want to get something on paper, so we can talk about it. Um, excuse me. So, Monday, April twenty-sixth, I have a budget work session scheduled from five thirty to seven. And talking budgets and numbers, I keep these at an hour and a half. We could do them for six hours, but I feel like I'll lose the crowd when we talk too much with numbers. You know, it's only, it's good to take it at chunks, and that's what we've been doing the last few years. It's worked. But again, this is all subject to what the mayor and council wants to do. And have another bu- budget work session scheduled for the following Monday, um, on May the third. Um, also, I'm sorry, back up to the end of April, we got, we had to put out the constant, that, constant yield advertisement. That's gotta be put out between seven and fourteen days be- before a constant yield hearing, which we talked about the tax rate, at the May meeting. Excuse me. Um, so that is at the May tenth meeting, where, with the constant yield hearing, where the residents can comment on the tax rate. And then that is also the budget first read, because we've had two work sessions. We get a, you know, a, a better working draft going. Um, and then Monday, May seventeenth, the filing week, I have another budget work session scheduled. And in June, we do the final budget review at the June fourteenth meeting, the budget final read. And that is where we also adopt the budget and the tax rate. Excuse me. So if anybody has any questions, comments, the dates don't work. Again, this is looking out from now until June. We can go ahead, you know, and change as needed. But I just want to get something on paper, so they can see kind of like the, the flow of the budget process.
Thank you, Mr. Tanelli. And if you wouldn't mind emailing this to the council, so we can check our dates and let you know if we have conflicts when it, with any of them, that would be super helpful.
Sure.
Because there may be some instances where, due to whatever other priorities, we, you know, may need to shift some of those dates, as you said previously. Uh, Councilmember Rout?
Thank you, Mayor James. Um, acting town administrator Tanelli, um, I've just, um, just, to, just looking at the spaced out for your, um, budget sessions over Mondays, that's like a long time. And maybe, you know, for memory, for people's memory, um, so is there a closer window that you could create? Maybe three sessions, but closer?
You want closer together?
A meeting, yeah, because, you know, I, I, I don't remember.
I, I just get worried about burning you all out too quick if, if I pack it all in. So I was trying to give like, you know, a little break. But it, you know, it's up to the council. If, I mean, we knock them all out in one week. You know, we can keep them spaced out, like, one each week, or, you know, it's up to, I mean, I just put this, you know.
That was just a recommendation, and, you know, like, even if you, um, if you do something like that, where maybe it's like over a course of two weeks, you break it down, you know, so maybe two, two different sessions. And then like, uh, like a last, like a smaller session, where you're not intimately going through everything, like, at, like how you did at the pop-up, when we had it at the Bladensburg Community Center. I know these will all be virtual.
Yeah.
Not gonna be popping up anywhere in person because of COVID, our friend COVID, but.
Kind of miss those.
But, you know, so maybe, so.
Thank you, uh, Councilmember Rout. So, Mr. Tanelli, could you just do both options, so we can just look?
I'll, I'll put out a couple of our drafts.
Perfect, thank you.
And, and just let me have feedback, and we'll bring it back.
Sounds great. And then the last, um, couple of items that we had were under old business, the Fifty-Eighth Avenue update and the Maglev update. Um, but again, it's six fifty-eight, and I want to be compliant. Um, would you all be amenable to putting those items on the council agenda? And we just do the update once, um, with, I see he has nodding. Okay, so I'm just, it's under old business for the work session. So what I'm doing is, is just, um, putting that under unfinished business, since it would be updates on both of those items. All right, so with that, uh, we've come to the end of tonight's work session agenda. May I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Moved by Councilmember Rout. Is there a second?
A second.
Seconded by Councilmember Blunt. Any discussion? Hearing none, I'll call for the vote. All in favor, let it be known by the saying of aye?
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The ayes have it. Thank you so much. So we've got about a minute, uh, for a quick break. And then we'll be back at seven for the council meeting. Thank you all for tuning in.